Good evening, welcome to the Milford Planning Board of August 12, 2025. We have a little, small presentation for us. Representative Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you taking us out of order here, but given the circumstances or the message we've had from the town planner, we want to make sure that he stays here while we do this. So, don't go anywhere, Larry. You're a captive audience right now. So, as we understand it, this is the last meeting before Larry retires. So, both the Select Board and myself wanted to do something to recognize Larry for his years of service. And it was 24 years ago, 2001, I was first elected to the Select Board. Reno Deluzio had retired as town planner, and we did the interviews for the new town planner. And I was sitting right where Chris was, and I remember, I think there were like three interviews, and you know, the first couple we went through, and then this third guy comes up, and the thing that I remember about him, he had the most badass pocket protector of anyone I've ever seen, and it was fully loaded with whatever engineers do with whatever. And I remember telling my colleagues at the time, forget about the resumes, that's our guy. And Larry, that's the decision that we made, and I think it proved accurate. So, you know, Larry has, like I said, has spent 24 years as town planner, and you know as well as I, just great work that he's done on behalf of the town, just very dedicated, very, very knowledgeable about the zoning bylaw, knows it better than anyone that I know, certainly better than myself, and he's been a tremendous resource for the town. Just a sense of fairness that he's had for everyone who's come before him. You've given a lot to the town, Larry. I can say myself personally, and I'm sure the Select Board as well, and the Planning Board, we really appreciate your dedication and service. So, I drove to Boston today for you to get this citation, so you better sit there and just listen to it and take it. This is from the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Larry L. Duncan in recognition of your retirement as town planner from the town of Milford following 24 years of dedicated, selfless, and highly knowledgeable service to the community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success. I've dated this August 29, 2025. This is signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and myself, State Representative, colleague, friend, and admirer, Ryan Murray. Larry, we're gonna miss you. Larry, today all around Town Hall, everybody was trying to figure out how we were gonna pull this off. But it's a true testament that the man you are, that very quiet, very humble, just wanna do a good job, don't want any recognition, you just wanna do what's right for the community. And that, you know, shows exactly the type of person that you are. And every time I give one of these away to a longtime board member or a longtime employee of the town, I always say, just imagine how many Select Board members, how many Planning Board members, how many different Board members that you've served with over the years. And, you know, I was just talking to State Representative Murray in the hall. You know, you're in a very tough position because you only wanna do what's right. And, you know, there were times where everybody wants to try to do it their way, but you never lost your focus. You were always a gentleman, you were always kind, you always listened, you were always understanding, but you never wavered, you know, because you always wanted what was best for the community, what was best for the citizens of this community, which again, as I said earlier, is a real testament to who you are. You know, I, over my span of being on the Select Board and my years on the school committee, I've watched you just, you know, very quietly walk around Town Hall and just do your job and do a great job. And this community is gonna miss you. They really, truly are. You know, you're, you got a big set of shoes if someone's gonna come in to fill, and hopefully that person will be the same as you, you know, very kind, compassionate, you know, understand, you know, what's right for the community. And I think you can honestly say that it takes a little while to learn the Milford culture. You know, I've been here 40 years and I'm still learning it every day. It's unique. It's unique. But, you know, Tom and Paul unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. They wanted to be here, they wanted to be remembered to you, they wanted to, you know, me to personally say thank you and for everything that you've done for the town. And so I have a citation as well from the Board of Selectmen or Select Board. The town of Milford, Massachusetts, be it known that the Select Board hereby offer their congratulations to Larry Duncan in recognition of your retirement after 24 years of dedicated service as a town planner. We are deeply grateful for your hard work, leadership, and dedication, which has made a lasting impact, and that's important, a lasting impact on our community. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Select Board extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 12th day of August, 2025. Signed, Thomas J. O'Laughlin, Esquire, Paul Mazza Kelly, and Michael K. Walsh. Larry, on behalf of the Select Board and the town of Milford. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just indulge your committee just a little bit more, if we could get a photo with Larry, maybe you could smile.
He hasn't done it in 24 years.
Let's grab a photo. Where would you like to have it?
Right here is fine.
Okay, all right.
With the board members?
Sit here next to your dad?
Stand over.
Sit over.
Sit next to me? Sit next to me? Sure. Then you guys, will you come in behind?
Sure enough, sure.
Because otherwise, you're not gonna get the shot.
Need a wide angle on me. Sorry, guys. That's yours, Larry.
Oh, that's right.
That's yours. Do you want us to sit down? Oh, sit down. How's that? How's that, is it okay?
Scoot over like you like them.
You gotta hold them so they can see it in the picture.
Well, that's what, yeah, I can't tell. Can you see it?
Yeah.
It's smoking, so you're gonna...
Congratulations, Larry.
Rick, have some cake for you. That's always... He wants to eat cake.
You wanna do it now? Maybe you can hold it on your teeth and watch it. Well deserved.
Oh, you want it for the, yeah, we'll do it the other thing, we can do it.
Okay.
Bye, thanks.
Somebody. Those guys, they got a vase. Tell me about private effects for 37 years. Those guys, vacation time for them.
See you later.
Okay, we got the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approved the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
That's three, three in favor, one abstention.
Abstain?
He wasn't here.
It wasn't him.
Oh, that's... Do you want to...
We have no 81Ps. Oh, yes. Pardon me.
You can take the place of the 81Ps. So, even though it's not on the agenda, I think it's appropriate that we introduce our new town planner, so it's my honor to introduce Matthew Benoit. Matt's got 18 years of public sector planning, easy for me to say, experience. He's been town planner in Auburn, Natick, and most recently Douglas. He's got a degree in regional planning from Husfield State. There were 10 applicants, I believe. Joe was on the...
I don't know how many applicants we had, I just know how many, I just had the other end.
You viewed four candidates, and they hired Matt anyway, so I think he'll, I think he'll be fine going forward. We tried to do a month overlap with our position schedules so that he can begin to get accustomed to where all that stuff is in our office. Luckily, he'll have Liz to fall back on going forward after the end of the month. Welcome to Matt, and I think he'll do a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we welcome you here and look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay.
Larry, you are leaving your cell phone number, correct?
I lose a cell phone.
That's why I'll give it to you, it's just how I do it, good.
Joe, he smiled on that one.
Okay, we have a public hearing. Larry, you wanna read the notice, please, for the public hearing?
A second. I just shuffled all my papers under the awards and got out of sync. Milford Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing on Tuesday, July 15, 2025, in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street. The Milford Planning Board will, at the times designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following. 7:02 PM, application to Darn Properties LLC, 7 Bad Nav, Milford, Mass. for the parking reduction special permit for the property located at 206 East Main Street, assessors map 32, Lot 14B, and consisting of 3.4 acres, properties in an IB and IC zone. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection at the Office of Planning and Engineering, Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass. during normal business hours. This notice was published in the Daily News on 7/1 and 7/8, and obviously, that was last month, so we have a written grant of extension until tonight's meeting, so that the hearing has not been opened yet. This will be the first opening of the hearing, and the applicant's representative is here. What's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman? Would you like me to read a...
Let the applicant, or let him do his presentation? Let him do his presentation, yes.
Take it, John.
All right, now, thank you all for the record. John Federico with Carrier &amp; Helmon. So, we have a 206 East Main Street here, existing shopping plaza, some oversight that we've had regarding filing for a special permit to do shared parking out here, so that is essentially what our goal is for tonight. Due to the small nature of the site, we are only able to fit 88 total stalls out here, and I have provided the Board with an updated parking table to kind of help walk through what our plan of action is here. So, we have 12 units in total, and if you're reading through the chart, essentially I've provided the Milford Town parking calculation for that particular use, and then if seats or employees are applicable at all, those numbers have been included. If not, the total unit square footage has been included for there. Any of the highlighted numbers are the controlling values for our parking generation, and in total, with some rounding, we're gonna be looking at about 110 total required stalls. Due to the fact that we only have three uses out here, we will be seeking out a 10% reduction, so that would bring our overall total down to approximately 99 with some rounding. As of right now, there is these two units here that are currently being occupied by cafes and/or like breakfast type places, one of them is a donut shop, if I'm not mistaken. Both of those businesses are gonna be closing at 1:00 PM, so essentially the 13 required spaces that are needed at each of those units, after 1:00 PM, those will be fully freed up. And then, starting at 3:00 PM, there is Unit 8 here, which is a dance studio. That's primarily for students, after-school type activities, so they will be operating from 3:00 to 9:00 PM. They're only gonna be required, based on total square footage, 12 spaces, so essentially we are seeking a reduction of the overall amount of spaces just based on hours of the businesses currently onsite. So, right now, with our required parking before 1:00 PM, we're gonna be looking at 98 total stalls. With the 10% reduction, we're gonna be at the 88 number that we will currently have onsite. And then for anything after 1:00 PM, essentially when that second business opens up and the first two close, we're only gonna be required 84 stalls with rounding, and then with the reduction, we would be at 75 total stalls that are required at that point. So, just based on this alone, we do believe with the hours of operation in mind, that the 10% reduction will be applicable here. And I can go into a further point on some outdoor seating that we have, but I'll at least open it up to the Board initially if there's any questions, comments on how we're currently conducting this breakout.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we can even entertain this. There's nothing in our bylaw that says anything about hours of usage. The 10%, that's what the 10% is for, is for things like that, not to then take the 10% and then take the fact that we have certain uses. That's how you're getting the reduction. There's nothing in the bylaw that allows it. I think that, you know, we can't even act on this. We don't have the right to do it, even if we wanted to, and I don't want to, to be totally honest, but besides that, I don't think legally we could even do this. The town has never given us the right to do this.
Larry, you wanna read your letter, please?
The applicant requests parking reduction special permit for the existing shopping plaza. This is to facilitate their original proposal that would convert two existing parking spaces into an outdoor seating area. The plaza currently contains the following four distinguishable uses, to my count, so the use categories would be restaurant, office, retail, and salon. So, if you compare that, as long as I'm reading through there, with John's chart, there are five restaurants. Well, anyway, restaurants, one use. What he's listing as the service uses would be the second use. The retail would be the third use, and then the office would be the fourth use. So, they have four uses, which triggers the potential for up to a 10%. So, that part is still in line with the regs. So, anyway, so with four distinguishable uses, restaurant, office, retail, and salon, thus meeting the special permit thresholds under subsection B.3 for potentially up to 10% reduction by special permit. To be in zoning compliance, the plaza needs, at least when I was doing these calcs, I determined the plaza needed 107 off-street spaces, and that doesn't account for the 44 existing on that day, outdoor seats that I had witnessed on the plaza. But they do only have 88 spaces, as John had mentioned. So, just with that mix, it would require an 18% reduction just to bring the site into conformance without addressing any outdoor seating or eliminating the two spaces that are also being proposed. But given the number of distinguishable uses, the Board's limited to the maximum 10%, even if we did find in favor for a special permit. The applicant contends that those alternate AMP and hours of certain uses should be considered as sharing and therefore only count space requirements once instead of multiple times. So, this alternative approach, because at the time, there were only two businesses that had alternatives in the proposal, this alternative approach would artificially reduce the 107 required spaces down to 94. So, with that number, it would require a 6% reduction to get to 88. So, at least that combination in the proposal and the special permit granting authority would be in the Board's range to consider a special permit in that situation. So, however, if the two spaces were converted to outdoor seating as proposed, the existing available parking would then be reduced to 86 spaces, so they're kind of burning their parking candle at both ends. Also, the new outdoor seating itself would in turn require five additional off-street parking spaces, bringing the number of, quote, adjusted required spaces from 94 with that other calculation, back up to 99. So, that number would require 13%, again, over the 10% max that the Board can even consider. So, I'd recommend that it was continued. As it turned out, you were missing, as you are tonight, you're missing a member, so by opening the hearing tonight with Martha not present, she's not gonna be able to participate in any further hearings or vote on it in the future, so you're gonna need a unanimous vote of the four members. In that context, just jumping out of sequence here, aside from the other comments, my suggestion would be if there's a way forward at all or any other issues to be considered, I would think you would wanna grant the Board a continuance until the next meeting, because if the hearings close tonight, all they can deal with is what's been presented thus far with the original app and with the new data you have, or whatever you talk about tonight.
All right.
I would think it would be preferable on, you know, for both parties to continue the hearing until your next meeting, which is the second, I believe, of next month, to continue the conversation. But bearing that in mind, I can go through the rest of the packet if you wanna hear the other comments.
I'd like to hear from, before continuing, any comments from the other members of the Board.
I mean, I've got a couple others with it. One, as I said, I don't believe we can even act on it. Our bylaw doesn't provide for timing. One. Two, as far as we're concerned, that's a restaurant with a certain thing. If a different restaurant, I mean, this is not a stagnant thing, and a different restaurant moves in, those hours go out the door, but it never comes back to us, and then we don't have, we have no control over it.
Understood.
So, you know, to use that as an argument to me is something that will never fly by me. It's not gonna work. And the other thing is, looking at this site and asking for a reduction, as far as I'm concerned, we got burned once at the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, where we have, I don't know how many parking spots behind Stop &amp; Shop, and nobody in the world uses them, and the applicant who told us we'd make sure that everybody that worked in those stores would go out back there and pop. None of them do, none of them are even told to do it, and they're never used, and we've got a parking lot that tends to be very crowded, and in certain times of year, people have a hard time finding it. We've got 10, 12 spaces out back that you're counting, that no one, I'm sure, has ever used in the life of this plaza. And I've gone into this plaza, and the parking is tight at various points in time, and to then be asking for a 10% reduction is not something that I'm comfortable granting. So, I mean, we're, you know, I think we're putting a lot of stuff into a small plaza, and we wanna keep piling it in, and at some point in time, you gotta meet the parking requirements, and you barely met them before when you built it, and you've added spaces now, and now you're coming back and asking us because we have a possibility to now reduce the amount of parking, and I just think it's not gonna fly.
Chris?
Yeah, to Joe's point, I was considering that same thing. What happens if any one of these restaurants changes their hours, or a new restaurant comes in, and now they're, you know, they open at 6:00 in the morning, and they run until 6:00 at night, so then this whole shared parking consideration is no longer relevant. So, with that, now we go back to the original numbers as opposed to these, in a sense, revised numbers, so, yeah.
And I don't think you were here with the shared park. I mean, the reason why we did the shared parking and granted it was exactly for these reasons, because we recognized the fact that people would have offsetting hours, so you didn't need to max out every one of them. We can give a 10%, but now it's like, that's the reason why we did it, and now we wanna take advantage of it again, and to me, that wasn't the reason why we did the parking thing. You know, that's already been taken into account.
Joe?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. I agree with Joe and Chris both. This is a tight, this is a tight spot to try to finagle around and get 10% with the thing. I see no sense in doing it. It's just, it's too tight. It's too tight a spot trying to put 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag, and it's just...
I didn't wanna say that, babe, but that's what I was thinking.
That's a blip, right?
It's just, it's, so I can't see it, so...
I'm fine with doing a continuation. I'm not sure if, in like the special permit type of application, if we can do like a withdraw without prejudice and come back to you guys with a new plan after talking with the owner some more of the property?
If you do a continuation, if you wanna go back to the owner and see if there's some way out of this, I mean, I don't know it, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say we have to shut it off tonight.
I would say to withdraw it without prejudice is, and if they get a denial, then they can't bring it back for two years, so if you withdraw it...
If he just continues it, then he can withdraw it.
If he wants...
He can always withdraw it later, yeah.
If that's with the owner...
Yeah, just ask for the continuance if the owner says, no, withdraw it, because we're not ready with the amount of changes that we'd need, or if you can come back in a month and say, well, this is what we're gonna do, and this is how we think, based on what the Board has just said, trying to meet those requirements, that's fine.
Yeah, because the numbers game, literally, and one of the scenarios I mentioned in my staff report was that if you buy into the overlapping hours concept, which I think is questionable, but if you bought into that, the numbers work out, what did I say, you'd still need a 6% reduction just to do that, and that's getting rid of all the outdoor seating, period. So, that would, that would get you down to whatever I said, what, 94, which would be the adjusted total required if you bought into the idea of the shared parking, but that's only, that's only sharing two uses. The current proposal tonight is sharing three, which is totally...
I know. I don't know that there's a way to get to an end. I'm just, I'm just giving them the opportunity to look at it again, but I don't see one off the top of my head.
We can continue, and go back to your client, and again, express the client's thoughts of the Board.
No, no, that's one of the reasons why, I didn't wanna come in and at least open it and get some Board feedback.
And the fact that you need a unanimous...
Unanimous vote, because, yeah, Martha's not here, so you need to sign the grant of continuance to, what was it, September 2, I believe, unless you wanna do it later, but I'm not sure.
I'm more than happy to sign it from now on.
All right.
Make a motion, we continue to September 2.
Moved to second, and we continue the public hearing until September 2. Any further discussion?
We second it?
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous of four. Thank you. See you, John. Okay, next we've got Mount Pleasant to say the bond reduction. On release, brother.
Thanks, you too.
Yes.
I'm David, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Name to face.
I never remember to burn my plaque.
I was thinking, I said, it's gotta be this. Hi, nice to meet you all. I'm David Pine Jr. I wanna assure everyone, I'm not as loud as my father is, but I am here for Kevin Lobos here tonight, so it's nice to meet you. I'm representing him over Mount Pleasant. I know this was accepted by the town in the last Springtown meeting. Everything is done, except one thing that we are still working on is the Sewer Department had asked for a few kind of updates to the plan. We did update those. John, I mean, he was on vacation, and then like he just got back on Monday. I met with him today. We did add, I can show you kind of what we did here, we got some plans. We added what he wanted to get done.
That's all right.
So, you're already going too long.
Well, he's not going too long, because I was gonna recommend that they continue it.
Oh, they don't have it done? Oh, okay. So, this is the first time you're seeing it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'd recommend we continue till the next meeting.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping if there is a way, if John signs off in the next like week or two, we could possibly, you know, then get the kind of bond release then, just because the next meeting isn't till September. So, John did look it over. He just wanted some additional labels added to what we had, but the plan itself will not change kind of as it is. Maybe if we could possibly give it, you know, in control of John, Liz, I don't know, that's a possibility, just so we can get the kind of bond release done in the next week or two.
That's all you had was comments on this?
That is absolutely it, and I sent the... And I sent the Asbilly plan and all of the information to all of the relevant departments, police, fire, water depart, everybody. And that was when the sewer looked at the plan, and just had some relatively minor...
Yeah, we were able to turn it around within the day, and then we just saw him today, and he just wanted to make sure that we kind of labeled the new lines we put in. So it shouldn't, honestly, I think by Thursday or Friday, you know, John willing, it should be all set to go. We would just prefer, you know, to kind of get that bond release moving as fast as possible.
Does the sewer department need to vote on this, or is it just John that needs to check off that this is good to go?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I would say this is even more of a courtesy on your behalf than an actual requirement. So, you know, I think, I guess I would agree that it would be appropriate, if you felt comfortable doing so, to grant it, subject to, for me or Larry receiving confirmation from the sewer department.
Which...
Me or Larry or Matt?
Somebody.
Yeah, that's right, Matt is on payroll.
Which, we did meet with John today, he did like what we did. He just, if you notice, those lines on the highlighted plan, those are in, he just wants the labels put in, which, you know, we a hundred percent respect that, and want to do that. So we were just hoping that the board would, you know, also give us permission to...
Yeah, it'd just be nice to have these things ahead of time, instead of...
Motion that we, we release the bond, subject to final confirmation from the sewer board, that they're, that the plans that submitted will be acceptable. There's no reason to wait at that point, and they, they can, we can release at that point, because...
They're the ones that are responsible, Larry and Liz are the ones that are responsible for the bond to begin with, so it's not like it's going anywhere till then.
I'll second that.
But moved in second, that we release the bond upon receiving the information from the sewer department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous of four.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Did you guys, I just want to thank Chris. Don't lose it out.
Do you need to say?
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have sewer, street discontinuation for portions of Whale Street and McGill Lane. Is anybody here?
Yes, but he doesn't need to speak.
Yeah, at the, at the regular meeting of seven twenty-eight, twenty-five, select board voted to refer this request from the gun club to the planning board for your review and comment. The club wishes to secure access to their property by limiting the length of public streets in the immediate vicinity of their facility. My suggestion is that you recommend the select board place an appropriate warrant article on the upcoming fall town meeting warrant. Planning board will follow up with a specific recommendation regarding the article to town meeting, once the formal language is established. I've done a draft, at least placeholder article, so that there's sufficient language to define what an article would be doing. Whether this language exactly stays that way or not, at least it reserves a spot for them on the warrant. I've given this to the town administrator this morning, so it's already in his file as a placeholder, so my recommendation is that, is that you forward the recommendation to select board to put it on the warrant.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the area up there.
Yeah, I mean, I think they own on both sides of McGill Lane, at that area, so I don't, you know...
Yep, so there are no other butters at all.
And I met with both the fire department and highway department about this, before it got this far, so...
Yeah, the only thing that Whale Street goes to, that portion is a cell tower now, anyway, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a recommendation, we put, we recommend that the select board place this on the warrant for the upcoming fall town meeting.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded, we have the select board put this on the fall, as a warrant, on the warrant for the fall town meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four. Thank you. Okay, nickel lever, seventeen Jackson Court. Somebody...
Well, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Jackson Street, isn't it?
The applicant requests a variance to allow for the construction of an ADU on the subject property. Specifically, the proposal is construct a twenty-six by thirty-four structure on Lot one fifty-three. The fact that they want to do it as an ADU is irrelevant to the variance request. Lot one fifty-three are the merged lots that in combination constitute the subject property. Due to the shape of the lot, the proposed unit is to be located seventeen feet from Jackson Court property line. However, a twenty-five-foot front yard setback is required in the IRA zoning district, hence this variance application. The three merged lots total a little over nineteen thousand square feet in area, but are overly irregular in shape, abutting the southerly end of Jackson Court, in fact, entirely surrounding the end of Jackson Court. The single-family dwelling on Lot one fifty-two totals a little over three thousand square feet in floor area. So I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA, their applications included, with some additional explanation. The last couple sheets show site plan of the Jackson Street layout with the proposed lot location. There's a blow-up showing the building locations, a little bit more readable, show how close the street is, and how narrow that section of the lot is. And then there's an aerial on the last sheet, just to orient you to where all this stuff is located in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Larry. What's the favor, pleasure of the board? Are any questions from the board?
No, I know the area pretty well. I've got to shut off sprinklers down there a few times. Make a motion, we send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA?
I'll second that.
Moved in second, we send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four. Thank you. Okay.
Moving on.
We got a variance referral for one hundred Midway Street.
Yeah, the applicant requests a variance to allow for the creation of a building lot from the previous leased parcel configuration that currently constitutes Lot ninety-five C. Specifically, the proposal is to establish a separate lot to accommodate the sale by the Roman Catholic bishop of Worcester of the bank building property, which is currently situated on a land lease parcel at one hundred Midway Street. The lease parcel was established from the larger Sacred Art Cemetery property back in nineteen eighty-five, to align the property boundaries appropriately with the actual physical location of the developed bank site. The IB zoning district lot configuration variances will be required, hence this application. The proposed lot frontage is one ninety-four, where two hundred and thirty feet is required in this district. The proposed width is two oh-six, twenty-six, two fifties required in this district. I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. There are a couple of maps, as the last few sheets in the packet. The next to the last sheet highlights where the new lot split line will be, and obviously the aerial shows the current configuration of things. So the parcel actually, you know, extends over into the cemetery, beyond their east driveway even. One of the things I did notice, and I'll have to call Ernie, is that it appears the application had inverted the frontage and width requirements, and I believe what I reported are the accurate dimensions, because I took them from the plan and checked the plan. Anyway, I recommend favorable.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I didn't realize that was a land lease parcel.
Yeah, I was surprised they did it that way, but...
Back then, I'm surprised, I thought they had sold all that as...
Not yet, but the archdiocese had wanted to do it, because I think they could have done the lease, but anyway, so, yeah, it's, given the fact that it's been developed this way all this time, it doesn't seem like it's...
Make a, make a motion, that we send a favorable to the ZBA?
I'll second that.
But moved in seconded, we send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of four.
Moving on.
Moving on, we have ZBA for three thirty-six Main Street.
The applicant requests a special permit approval to establish used motor vehicle sales and repair use on the subject property. Vehicle-related uses require special permit from the ZBA and the CB District. Specifically, the applicant proposes a sale and repair of used cars. The maintenance repair of small construction machinery and equipment is also being proposed. The existing garage and repair area will be retained. The off-street parking requirements cannot be determined until a specific outdoor display area and number of used cars for sale are proposed, which hopefully, by the time they get through ZBA, they'll figure that out. The existing parking areas are to be paved and restripped, as noted on the site plan. There are no additions proposed to the structure. However, no interior floor plan has been submitted, at least thus far. I recommend favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA, subject to the applicant providing a floor plan to specify, and specifying the outdoor display area and number of used cars for sale on the property. An amended site plan will definitely be required from the planning board, subsequent to any special permit approval. The last couple sheets show portions of the site plan, a blow-up of the site plan, there's...
This is the old replacement auto parts.
Yeah, it was an auto dealership, if you remember long enough. I don't know if I want to date myself that far, but yeah, I know, I was going to say it's probably before your time.
That was a Dodge, that was a Dodge dealership.
But that was part of the problem for them, in terms of any prior non-conformity, because that's long gone. So they're trying to go through the process now, and get it all strained out. They've got some issues to deal with, encroachments and stuff, but they'll deal with that later. And there's the final sheet in your packet, I think, if I can get to that page, yeah, it's the aerial of the current situation. So you'll be seeing the site plan if it gets through the ZBA, so recommend a favorable report.
I have questions. Or at least comment. Yeah, I went by the property today, and I know it's going to come back to site plan. I guess a few concerns would be, it's looking to do auto sales, auto repair, and then also small equipment, seems like, I'm concerned with a lot of items being out front for sale or on display and all that, and just kind of not looking presentable. I know that's a little bit above and beyond our board, but just being that it's on Main Street, I have those concerns, because the building itself, driving by today, definitely it's going to need some, some work.
Well, they're going to have to go before site plan.
Right, they will.
They're going to have to put in some kind of a landscape...
Exactly, so I know that they still have that. I'm just making those points publicly, as I've gone by. And then the other concern is, is outback being a gravel lot, you know, if you look at the plans right now, they're showing it as parking, there's parking, kind of lined parking spots, but it is all gravel. There are a couple broken-down vehicles out there already, which of concern, that if it's, if there are any type of automotive fluids already leaking into the ground in gravel there, we know that that's just not good practice, or being a good neighbor in that area. So again, making those points, I'm a little bit concerned, again, for the usage, and kind of sending a favorable because of that, and I hope that the ZBA kind of, you know, tightens up on their, their aspects and sees these same items, and again, will come back to us, and we can have this discussion for it, too.
It's our...
Really, it'll be us. I mean, all they're doing, you know...
Is granting the, they grant the variance...
Special permit.
Special permit, right.
We'll take care of the site plan, I'm sure, I'm sure we're going to...
Because they'll have to pave it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, definitely has to be paved, anyway.
So you could, you could forward, make a favorable, if that's your position, subject to the parking lot being paved and striped appropriately, and they submit a formal site plan back to plan?
Could to, with a site plan approval from the planning board.
Mr. Chair, so having the ZBA included in the special permit, requiring, for me, it would be the back parking lot being paved, is a legally stronger way to make sure that they pave it. It's, it's a lot harder for them to get around it.
By saying, if we were to send a favorable with the conditions of...
If you send this favorable with the conditions, and then, and they include that, the condition, at least for the, for the paved parking area, then it's, it's just, it's a, it's not a big difference, but it legally, it will help.
I understand.
He's going to have a tough time if it's not paved anyways, because it's not going to be handicapped accessible.
There's lots on that lot that I was looking at, that's just...
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, we had the same thing when we did, I mean, in terms of paving areas, the landscape supply down on Dilla Street, and they finally acquiesced to doing that, because they said, "Well, how are you going to, how are you going to handle handicapped accessibility?"
But this one has paving in the front.
Well, I would assume that's where they're going to display cars, I would think.
Well, I know, but if they can get away with not paving the back by putting the handicap accessible, I'm just...
You're making it way harder than necessary.
Either way, either way is going to be, it's going to come before us, and we're going to...
You can make the recommendation that way, Chris, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, like, make a motion to send a favorable recommendation for three thirty-six Main Street for their special permit, with the conditions that they pave the real lot.
And file a site plan.
And file, yes, file a site plan, thank you.
Second that.
Seconded, it's moved in seconded, we send a favorable recommendation, Joe seconded, to the zoning board, with Chris's recommendations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four. Larry?
Go ahead, finish your stuff.
Close it and do it off camera.
Set the schedule for September?
Yes.
So we're looking at September 2nd and the 16th?
Yep.
Yep. Those dates work?
Yes.
September 2nd, September 16th for the next two meetings? Okay. No, sir.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, and your first half of the meeting, how's that?
Good.
And we look forward to working with you, so...
Thank you.
Again, we're, we're all easy to, easy to reach, talk.
Sounds good.
And any questions you have, or comments you'd like to get from us, I'm sure, there's no problem at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the meeting?
I'll second that.
Moved in second to close the meeting, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four. Good evening, and thank you.